Welcome to the 2021 Burlington election debate with three candidates running for the select board. We have Joe Morandi, a two-term member of the board and a local businessman; Mike Runyon, a three-term member of the board, a retired firefighter and a member of the Fourth of July Committee; Sherri Ellis, who's been on town meeting for 26 years, is a member of the zoning bylaw review committee and has a background in human services. We also have three members of the press here with us who will be asking questions. We have Richard Hosford from BCAT, Christopher Huffaker from Patch, and Melissa Russell from Wicked Local. And I'm Bill Byer, your town moderator, who will be trying to keep these three in line tonight. Now, candidates, let's go through the ground rules here. We will start with an opening statement by each of you that'll last one minute. The order was set randomly, and it will be Sherri going first, followed by Mike, and followed by Joe, and we will use the same order for the closing comments. After that, we will have questions from the press, and you will each have 90 seconds to answer. Once we're finished with the press questions, you get the opportunity to question each other. And at the end, you'll get a two-minute closing, again, using the same order as which we used to start. So with that, why don't we get started here with the opening statements? And we're starting with Sherri.
All right. Good evening, everybody. And I want to thank Bill for moderating this event tonight and for BCAT for hosting the event, our panelists Rich, Chris, and Melissa, and my fellow candidates Joe and Mike. I also want to thank you and the audience for watching. My name is Sherri Ellis, and I'm a candidate for a seat on the Board of Selectmen. Thirty-two years ago, my husband Britt and I chose Burlington to make our home for the many advantages it afforded us as a family. My two daughters Samantha and Leanne attended the Burlington Public Schools and benefited from the Burlington Recreation and Youth Athletic Programs. As a vocal and active town meeting member for over 25 years, I've been a champion of fiscal responsibility, reviewing and approving our town budgets, and this has also included support and approval for many capital investments in the town such as the Memorial School, the recently completed fire station, and soon-to-be complete DPW facility. I've worked with fellow town meeting members to bring oversight and accountability to the school department's finances. I've been an active member on numerous committees in town, including Landlocked Forest, Town Facilities, Rules, Land Use, and the Northwest Park Housing Committee. Further, as the chair of the zoning bylaw review committee, I've been a leader in the areas of planning and responsible development. Professionally, having worked in the Lab Collaborative and Minuteman Senior Services for a total of 20 years and as a volunteer for Meals on Wheels for over seven years, I've had the opportunity to interact with many of my Burlington seniors, veterans, and those living with disabilities. These interactions have given me a firsthand understanding of the challenges that many in our community face, such as access to resources, communications, transportation, and housing. At this critical juncture, I believe Burlington needs a strong, knowledgeable, open-minded, and experienced member who will add a diverse perspective to the existing board and better represent the town that Burlington is today. I know that I'm well-prepared and ready on day one to make a significant contribution to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, and I look forward to our discussions tonight.
Thank you, Sherri. Now, let's hear from Mike, please.
Thank you, Bill, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to BCAT for hosting this event. My name is Michael Runyon, candidate for reelection to the Board of Selectmen. I'm a lifelong Burlington resident and a graduate of the class of '76 where I met my wife Lisa Roberto. We have three children and six grandchildren. I recently retired after more than 30 years of service as a firefighter EMT in Burlington, and I am forever grateful to the town for that opportunity. I have a long history in town government, having served 12 years in town meeting, three years as a commissioner at the Burlington Housing Authority, and currently serving my third term as your selectman. My involvement outside of town government is extensive as well. With the help of some good friends, we organized the town's Fourth of July activities. We reactivated and run the Thursday afternoon bingo for the seniors, and we built the 9/11 memorial flagpole on our town common. You will find me at the Wish Tree in Pumpkin Patch every year, as well as numerous other volunteer events. I am very much engaged in our community and have been for many, many years. I'm looking forward to tonight's forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Mr. Morandi, it's your opportunity. One minute.
Thank you, BCAT. Thank you for having us. Hello, Burlington. My name is Joe Morandi. I am a 21-year resident of the town of Burlington. I have been on the Board of Selectmen for the last six years, and I'm looking to get on for another three years. I've been a town meeting member for four years, zoning board of appeals for three. The second-generation barber at Morandi's Barber Shop. We've been here for 63 years in town. Taxes on both sides of it, commercial and residential, have both been my forte for this board that I sit on now. The fire station, too, has been a big part of the Selectmen. It's been my pleasure to serve as chairman for the last two years during this pandemic. It's been quite interesting and knowledgeable for me, so I thank the board for that, for allowing me to be there for two years. The rest, I will close up in my closing statements. So thank you for having us tonight, and look forward to your questions, and good luck.
Thank you, Joe. All right, now it's time for the press to get involved. Now, why don't we start with Rich Hosford asking the first question?
All right. Since it's the first question, I'll make it a nice broad one. What do you see as sort of, you know, the next three years, the most pressing issue facing the town, and how would you think, go about, you know, addressing it as a member of the Board of Selectmen?
Now, well, we'll vary the who goes first on this one, get some variety in it. So why don't we start with Mike, if you could answer that question first?
Sure, happy to. Thank you, Rich. Yeah, looking ahead, looking ahead, COVID is certainly different than any other task we've ever faced in our town's history here. But, you know, first and foremost, we have to focus on the health and safety of our residents. There's no question about it. We need to be able to maintain our level of services, our police, fire, DPW, keep all of those aspects of life in Burlington as normal as we possibly can, and that's been no easy task over the last 12 months. Secondly, support for local businesses, both large and small. I mean, they are the train that drives this town. We couldn't, we wouldn't enjoy the benefits that we enjoy here in Burlington without their assistance. So any assistance that we can provide, such as assisting them with outside dining rules, we've made allowances for advertising little A-frames that you see out on the curbs. We suspended the rules on that. Our Economic Development Director has provided grant money to some of these smaller businesses in town and retraining opportunities. And most importantly, probably the fiscal responsibility going forward with so many unknowns and already the loss of local receipts in the neighborhood of $6 million, we've really got our work cut out for us. But looking even further ahead than that, some of the things that we've, on our radar, obviously, I think a new school is needed here in town, police station, we all know about a police station. And interestingly, not heard a lot about, but the best use for the overlooked park, which, once a DPW facility makes that move, we'll be looking for opportunities up there.
Thank you, Mike. Sherri, we'll give you a time, opportunity now.
Sure. Thanks, Bill. Well, first and foremost, I think the immediate need is going to be to focus on the recovery from COVID and our town's economic health. We're going to need to listen to our business partners and our residents and really understand their needs. We're going to have to help them manage the recovery, and with any available means, whether that be managing the federal dollars that we'll receive to replace our lost revenue and lowering that tax burden, assisting through enhancing communications and any necessary regulations, as Mike said, to promote and support our local businesses. And then we have to find ways to assist our residents that are in need, such as the senior tax work-off program or creating other programs, such as scholarships or something like that that can help them out. But there are other issues as well that I believe we can focus on, the environment and our open space, communications, and our community's character. For an example, one thing we could do for our environment and open space would be seeking opportunities for public and private partnerships to enhance our recreational areas, parks, and our playgrounds, assuring that they're safe, well-maintained, and a source of pride to our community. With regard to communications, a simple thing that should be considered is developing a comprehensive communication plan that provides transparency in government, engages and informs our residents and business partners. Using existing channels that we have, the COA, the veterans, and community groups, we have to promote various means through these community forums, surveys, and things like that. And finally, enhancing our community's character, supporting our economic development, and seeking alternative funding sources for local initiatives while we proactively manage our redevelopment. The Board of Selectmen have a role in strategically developing the character of our town, and that must include collaborative discussions with the planning and economic development to set plans and policies that will ultimately provide a vision for our future.
Thank you, Sherri. And now, Joe Morandi, please.
Thank you very much. So I believe that the biggest thing is going to be is our taxes this year. We can go along with a bunch of other things that are being said, but the biggest thing right now is our taxes. Our taxes are going to be incredible with the loss of $6 million. Do we take it out of free cash? Do we take it out of different funds that we have? What do we do? How do we work with the commercial side, which is where my forte is, to be honest? The abatements are going to come in left and right with, you drive through Burlington on New Mall Road, and you have a 500-car park lot, and there's 30 cars in there. These businesses are all going to be asking for money back, and that's something we have to work with. That's the biggest avenue to go down for the town right now is what are we going to do about the tax rate for these residents? Whether we get money in from the government, the state, the federal, we don't know what we're going to get if we get anything at all. So my biggest thing would be the tax rate for the residents, to keep it where it is, to make the seniors affordable to stay here so they don't have to move out and sell their house and so on. So my biggest thing is going to be this tax rate. Where are we going to go with this? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Rich, more questions?
We should go to one of Chris and Melissa. Kind of vary it up.
We could do that. We'll give Melissa an opportunity.
I don't want to see all the good ones on them.
All right. Thank you. I do have a question. Right now, AT&amp;T wants to install the first 5G small cell equipment in town, probably not the last. This is highly concerning to some residents. They have possibly legitimate health concerns, but there are also conspiracy theories floating around, the notion of this new technology. How will you handle public reaction versus the need for better technology in town?
Why don't we start with Sherri for this one?
I can find my unmute button. Thank you, Melissa. That's a really good question. Actually, last night, the Board of Selectmen did discuss this at their meeting, and I sat in on that meeting and listened to the concerns of a lot of residents about the safety, not only of the admissions of the radiation, but also the cybersecurity issues. There's also a lot of pending litigation right now nationally that I think it would be wise for us to, if we have the time, to wait for that litigation to, you know, pan out and see what happens. I understand there is a time clock that's here, and, you know, the Selectmen definitely were discussing that last night. They've put off their discussion, getting more information, and I think that's vital and that's critical. I also think we need to really take a deep dive into the reports that the proponent AT&amp;T has given us and really understand the data that they've given, the levels that they talked about as far as safety, and what those, and the equipment as well, the levels of whether it's military-grade or lesser grade. So I think there really needs to be a lot of understanding on that. I appreciate the board retaining the attorney, Donna Brewer, and I think that'll be really beneficial. It causes hesitation. I think we don't want to be the first to jump into this, and we should really weigh all of the options and listen to our residents. The health and safety, as we know, is really critical. So that's what I had to say on that one. Thank you.
Why don't we go to Joe on this question now?
Thank you. Well, Sherri's right. Last night, we did have quite the debate, so it's the second time we've actually had them in front of us. The first time they were in front of us, there was a number of questions, so many that I couldn't even remember, 80% of them. Last night's meeting, there was a bunch more questions, and there were new questions, which was, does radiation go up further? So if it's on the telephone pole or wherever it is, does it go to the second or third floor of the buildings? There's a bunch of questions to be asked. So my thought last night, being the chairman of the Board of Selectmen right now, I thought that we would have a special meeting on this, which will be the 14th after the election, to get better views, get more questions asked, more questions answered. There are going to be double questions. There was a comment last night about, well, about, I asked the gentleman, did you, if you already answered a question just right, you answered it. Well, I'm sure that people are going to be reading this, and they're going to look at questions left and right, so hopefully they understand if they did ask a question, it is answered again. But I'm sure that the attorney for AT&amp;T will answer all the questions. Last night, as I sat there and I looked at the paperwork I had in front of me, it's taken me a week to go through two pamphlets, and I still have three left to do. Not only are we board members, we all, every one of us has a life outside of here, and sometimes life keeps you busy with other things. So as far as the small cell site goes, there is a lot of work to do on this. All I can say is that hopefully the next meeting, I'm still sitting there, and we can go over it again and get everything answered, along with that timeline that needs to be done. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
All right. Yeah, Melissa, that is a good question, and it's not one that I had anticipated ahead of tonight's forum, but we certainly got an airful last night from both sides, as well as our previous meeting on this. Thank goodness, we have hired the best and brightest attorneys and consultants to help us with this, because it's far more complicated than me, and I think I speak for the entire board. It's far more complicated than what we could resolve on ourselves. I'll tell you what, I'm pretty impressed with the local folks in town who have attended these meetings, and they've come up with some really marvelous questions, in my opinion, and they raise some serious doubt in my mind. So I'm fine with tapping the brakes on this thing until we get some better answers, and hopefully we can come to some resolution. But we don't want to end up in a lengthy costly litigation where this is FCC regulations that we're supposed to be in compliance with, but I do appreciate the time that we're taking on this matter, and I do appreciate the residents in town who have certainly educated me on small cell. I don't know if I can, you know, I can check my email from home here, so their input has been very helpful.
Thank you, Mike. Now, let's move on to a question from Christopher Huffaker, please.
All right. Thank you. I wanted to jump back somewhat towards Rich's first question. You all talked about the impact on businesses of the pandemic and, you know, what that means for the town's finances. Now, fingers crossed it doesn't, but if this ends up having, you know, long-term effects on the town's revenues, what budget balancing measures could you see yourself supporting as the town works through that?
Why don't we change the order a little bit? We'll start with Joe answer first, then we'll go to Mike, and Sherri will be the cleanup batter.
Well, thank you for that question. That's a really good, in-depth question. So where do we start? Do we start with taking money out of different funds? Do we raise the tax rate? Do we help the businesses along? Do we give them a break? Do we, we've already been asked by a couple of bigger proponents in town, I'll say, to get a tax break. We have a staff upstairs with the Assistant Town Administrator and Whitney that are absolutely incredible, and I will lean to them for everything that I could possibly lean to them for. Some of the stuff that we could talk about would be taken out of free cash. There's a million different avenues to go down, and to honestly answer this question fairly, the answer is, I don't know. I really don't. I can't say that there is a certain way that we're going to do it. We're going to look at every avenue possible that's going to help the residents of this town and the commercial side, so we don't lose the commercial side. So until we get answers from the group that's upstairs, which is phenomenal, I can't really say exactly what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, Mike, your turn.
Thank you. Yeah, that's really going to be a serious challenge for us going forward. You know, we're seeing that, some of you may recall, the perfect storm of '08. We had a rise in residential values and a decline in commercial values, and that's exactly what is predicted to happen going forward. You've already seen the incredible skyrocketing residential values here in town, but it is predicted by real estate professionals that we will see a gradual sustained decline in commercial property values for, you know, perhaps five years. Fortunately, we do have a healthy reserve. It was my recommendation when we were setting the tax rate last year that perhaps we should subsidize this year's budget by dipping into those reserves. The majority of the board felt it was a little too premature to do that, but I'm just not sure, which is until, you know, we're going to need some more time to figure this out. Where do we go? We cut over $2 million in September in capital requests. We've got a number of positions we have not filled, anticipating, you know, continued shortfall in revenue here in town. So we're bracing for the worst and hoping for the best at this point.
Thank you, Mike. Sherri, please.
Certainly, as Joe and Mike have both said, managing the budget this year is really going to be a challenging process. It's a moving target. The state, federal dollars, we're not, we don't know those yet. They're not for certain. We have estimates. The town set a guideline, and we'll continue to monitor that process. The town's financial experts, our accountant, our administrator, our treasurer, as well as our town ways and means and capital budget committees, they're going to need to address the balance of the revenue that we did lose, and with all the available options that we have for the revenue replacement. We're down that $6 to $8 million range. We still don't know that yet, but we do have available means of revenue replacement. We do have the free cash, $16 million. We do have stabilization, about $10 million. There's the American Rescue Plan funding that's anywhere from, you know, estimated $2 million to $8 million that the town would be able to receive and split that with the schools, I'm sure. But raising taxes that affects both the residents and the businesses that are hurting, that should be the option of last resort. As a town meeting member, and as I've always done, I'm participating in these departmental budget reviews in preparation so that I'll be able to effectively participate in the board's review of these budgets prior to town meeting. And with the hope that the revenue replacement will come in, the tax rate won't be set until the fall, so we can, that moving target will be set before then. Thanks.
Thank you, Sherri. Rich, do you have another question to ask the candidates?
Absolutely. So one of the things that's under the purview of the Board of Selectmen is the town's liquor licenses. What do you think of the level of licenses that we have in town, and how would you like to see them prioritized moving forward to, you know, sort of spur on economic development and help us sort of get out of this, you know, rut that we're, that the town and all towns in the area are in?
Why don't we start with Sherri first, followed by Mike and Joe with the last one?
Liquor licenses, there's a lot of them in town. We have a couple of different types of licenses in the sense of how they are managed. We have specific licenses that are geared towards specific areas in town, a certain number for the mall, a certain number for the town center, and then we have general liquor licenses, both the wine and then the beer and malt licenses. A few years ago, we increased the number of licenses. Town meeting voted to increase the number of licenses at the mall specific. Who knew the pandemic was coming? We have a lot of excess licenses now, and I believe that we really need to take another look at what we strategically want to do with the licenses. Knowing that we targeted for some areas, I know there's also discussions that the board's had about reducing the number of seats you need to have a liquor license. That would be one of the reasons why we're trying to open this up to more smaller local businesses to enable them to have a liquor license to have. I think it really needs to be planned out, thought about, and discussed in more detail, and really consider specifically really how to strategically plan more about where those licenses should be in town. Thanks.
Thank you, Sherri. Now, who did I say was next? I think it was Mike's turn now?
Okay, Bill, thank you. So unless we can get our daytime population back up to where it was in pre-COVID levels, you know, we're not, there's not going to be a lot of interest in any area of town for opening new restaurants. Only the strongest are going to survive here in town. But having said that, liquor licenses have taken up an enormous amount of our agenda year over year. It's, we've had issues of, you know, most of you are aware with the, down there in Crossroads Plaza with the Boston Beer Works license, we took it away, we had to give it back. It takes up an enormous amount of our time. We are currently discussing, though, as Sherri mentioned, perhaps reducing our seating capacity requirements for liquor licenses in town and hoping to promote smaller mom type of restaurants from potentially opening up over, along the Route 3A corridor, which we're really trying to encourage development down there, and we think that this might, this might be the answer to some of the delay in development down there. So we're certainly hoping so. But who has licenses and where they are? The mall, for an example, some of us on the board are of the opinion that they seem to have an unfair advantage over other areas of town, and we'd like to try and level the playing field in that regard. But at any rate, liquor licenses in Burlington, who knew? But at any rate, liquor licenses in Burlington, who knew would ever have, you know, Burlington would have like 75 liquor licenses in town, I think. I think just 15 short years ago, we only had about 30 of them. So we've grown exponentially in that market. But it is also produced some great returns. I mean, the commercial sector, it's a great idea. It's an amenity that helps attract businesses here in town, having restaurants and retail and things like that available. That's, you know, amenities like that, that Lord Millipore are over here. But anyhow, it's going to continue to be, I see Bill giving me the ax. Liquor licenses are going to continue to be predominant on our agenda going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Mr. Miranda, your turn.
Thank you very much. Well, it's a very good question. I'm glad it was brought up. Myself and Bob Bogman actually sat down and we were discussing the liquor licenses in town, how many there are, where they are. Some of them are for that particular area only, like the ones at the mall. Some of those licenses are strictly for the mall. But as far as the overall licenses, that's a huge income for us in town that we have when things are back to normal and they're full again. We do get quite a bit of revenue from that. As far as what Sheri said, yes, we are trying to minimize the number of seating. Right now is a discussion between the number zero and the number 30, 35, or something like that. There's different types of licenses. There's a beer and wine license. There's a cordial license. There's a full alcohol license. There's a liquor store license. One of the things that we've taken pride on as a board, I know there is one in town that, at a gas station where you can buy beer and wine at a gas station. Some other ones have come in front of us and we've said, no. We don't want this to be, every street corner has a, what we call a package store. In other parts of the country, they may call it something else. But as far as our liquor licenses goes, there's a lot of them. Where they are, who uses them, it's, the final say is up to the board. They have the final say on who gets them and who doesn't. One of the big assets to this, Bill's not giving me the ax yet, so I'm going. One of the finals says is the fact that when we issue a liquor license, there's so many things that they have to provide for us at these restaurants and a change of managers every time they change it, we have to get that. So Mike's right on this. There is a lot of time spent on this. And it's ironic that myself and Bob Bogman are on the liquor subcommittee for this, and neither one of us drink. So I don't think they did themselves any good. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Let's move on to the next press question. I guess it's Melissa's turn.
Thank you. The town has changed a lot in terms of diversity over the past years, and the look of the board doesn't really reflect that. Is that a problem? Is that something that should be addressed?
Okay. Why don't we start with Joe on this, then we'll go to Sheri and finish with Mike?
So let me, a quick question back, diversity, what do you mean by that? Do you mean that there's a fireman on there, there's an ex policeman, there's a barber that's on there, Nick is into communications, Bob's a veteran, retired veteran administration officer. I think the board is very diversified. I think we look at every aspect there possibly is. So I don't know exactly where you're going with that question.
Thank you, Joe. Sheri will give you an opportunity.
Thank you. I've been advocating at the Board of Selectment meetings for a town-wide action plan to address diversity, equity, and inclusion in our community. Last year, while listening to the ongoing efforts of many in the school system, including parents, students, and the District Equity Committee who are already developing an action plan to move our community forward, I added my support to that initiative. As a result, I spoke at town meeting in September as a proponent of the funding for the DEI Director for Schools to address inclusion and accessibility for all of our Burlington students, staff, parents, and ultimately our community. I believe adding this new director is an important first step in beginning the education process of our town. That being said, the role of selectmen is to set the strategic policy and plan for the future of our town, and this current board has not placed a similar conversation about diversity, inclusion, accessibility for our community on the forefront of their agenda. That needs to change. Our community must begin to address the necessary work about diversity, equity, and the accessibility within our community. I want to engage with our residents and with our community partners to elevate the importance of this conversation and to leverage the example of the school system to develop a plan of action, moving our entire town forward, increasing accessibility of information and the diversity amongst the board and the diversity amongst the town, including some things like communications, language translation, closed captioning, and those things. Remote participation are some of the basic and impactful steps that we can take that will benefit in our community. And I do believe that the town, the board should better reflect the town that we are today.
Thank you, Sheri. Okay, Mike, your turn.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I think your question, Melissa, was focused on the composition of the current board. And I think what you're alluding to, as you did in our interview for your newspaper, you referenced five white men. The guidelines here in Burlington for running for office are simple. You must be 18 years old and you must be a Burlington resident. And I would agree with Joe. I'm a fire, and I put up fires, Joe Cutser and Jimmy the cop, and so on and so forth. Those are the requirements for seeking office in Burlington. And I think we've got a pretty diverse board there, and anybody is encouraged to run for that office. I think that's a, let me follow up, but though, I kind of think that's an unfair question, sort of teeing it up for Mrs. Ellis, Melissa.
Thank you, Mike. Our last press question will be from Chris.
All right, I'm going to ask maybe, you know, pushing a similar theme as Melissa, but slightly different direction. Is, I mean, who do you see, who do you worry about, who do you think is underserved by this town, in this community? And how would you work to correct that?
Why don't we start with Mike on this one, then Joe, and then Sheri, please?
You know, there's a couple of areas in town where I like to focus my attention, areas where perhaps there's, where there's some folk who may be underserved. First and foremost is our seniors in town. Affordable housing has been near and dear to my heart for decades now. I've been part of the town's Housing Partnership Committee for over 20 years. As I mentioned earlier, I spent a few years as a commissioner with the Housing Authority. I had a program on BCAT called Housing Matters for a couple of years as well. The Housing Partnership Committee has been very active lately, focusing on our seniors. But we also have a need for family housing. A lot of kids that grow up in Burlington just don't have opportunities to raise their own families here. So housing is very important. Another area of concern, and it's been highlighted lately, is transportation. I thought we were making some progress with, you know, getting away from the beeline and providing that, excuse me, that door-to-door type service. But it was brought to my attention that that doesn't serve the students in town, those under 18 who are not allowed to, you know, on their own utilize that service. So kind of focusing on some options for our younger members of town as well. So those are the two areas, I think, that are probably the most underserved at this point.
Thank you, Mike. I believe I said Joe will come next, or did I say Sheri? Joe, go ahead.
Thank you. I have to agree with Mike. I think the seniors are the biggest thing. We just had a thing on the Planning Board meeting the other night. They have a project going on over at the Kent Building, and some comment was brought up about some senior housing over in there. The proponent was open for it, but not really open for it. So I think he talked about it a little bit. I think that the Northwest Park would be a great, a great area for some senior housing, which they're supposed to do as far as their guidelines when they sign the contract for that area. Mike, I'm glad you brought that up because I didn't know the 18-year-olds couldn't ride the bus. So it's been a thought of mine for the past, you know, the beeline, it may not, it may not get a lot of rides, but it was a great thing for the residents of this town, especially the seniors. And maybe it is time we look back at that to see if it's something we can't implement back into the program somehow. It'd be tough right now with the way the economy is for us. But I totally agree with Mike. These are the two biggest areas in town as far as that goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, Sheri.
As far as the underserved population in this town, I really believe that we don't know what we don't know. There hasn't been any assessments done on housing. We think that there's a need for senior housing. We know there's a need for senior housing. But what type of senior housing? We need to open up options for different types of housing and be open to that, different types, whether it be single-family home with accessory apartments, whether that be apartments, whether that be condos. We need to open that up, but first we need to understand what the needs are. Same with transportation. We eliminated the beeline that was available and open to everyone, and we replaced it with a system that is a good option for some, but it's not a good option for all. As the gentleman said, the under 18 can't ride it. Anyone who can't get in and out of a vehicle can't ride it. So it's not public transit. We don't have a public transit system in here. But we need to know what we need for public transportation. And again, we need an assessment of that. We need to listen to our community. We need to hear them and find ways to figure out who's all out there. What is our community? Who is underserved? And I think until we do these assessments and until we quantify what we have, we don't know who the underserved population is, and I'd like to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Okay, that completes our questions from the press. So it's time for the candidates to be able to ask each other a question. So why don't we give Mike the first option here, and we'll have Sheri go first and then Joe in order to respond.
Yeah, Bill, you know what, honestly, I just couldn't think of a question for the program tonight. So I'm just going to pass on that segment of the forum.
Okay, so then we'll give Sheri her opportunity and then with Joe and Mike to answer in that order.
All right, thank you, Bill. I do have a question. Currently, there's a high-density, over-55 housing proposal in a local residential neighborhood that's going to require over 30 waivers from our zoning bylaws in order to be built. The last time we went through this process on a housing proposal, and you were both a member of the Board of Selectmen, there were multiple public hearings in addition to the Board of Selectmen meetings. The current project was handled very differently. There's been no public hearings. Other town boards have not been consulted, and the abutters weren't notified until after the approval by both the board and the state. I'm not questioning the need for housing for those over 55 in Burlington. We talked about that. We need that. What I am questioning is why did you not follow the same process, providing the same level of transparency for this project as you did in the past?
Okay, Joe.
No answer.
Mike.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Bill. Sheri, the process for the request that you're talking about is completely different than the process we used on the proponent for the, I always forget the name of this, corporate drive. The proponent for corporate drive was a unified effort between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. We put out an RFP to developers because we were concerned about the 2020 census and our ability to sustain the threshold that the state set at affordable housing goal of 10%. The development, the 24-unit development that you're referring to, that process was different, wasn't a town initiative. It was a local developers initiative. It's no different than any other 40B that's been brought before us. They brought it to the board. They laid out their proposal. We endorsed the concept of a age-restricted, for-sale development, and we were guaranteed 25% of the units to be deemed affordable for Burlington residents, with nothing inappropriate about that process at all. That's now in the hands of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It went back to DHCD. DHCD reached out to every single department in Burlington, planning, conservation, asking for input on that, on the developers proposal, and they received nothing back in return. So there was nothing different about what's going on up there on Richardson Road than any other 40B over the years that's been brought forward.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Joe, it's your opportunity to ask questions.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to the two-minute closing for each candidate. Again, we'll follow the order we did for the opening statements. We'll have Sheri go first, followed by Mike, and ending with Joe.
All right, thank you again to BCAT, to Bill, our moderator, our panelists, and Joe and Mike as well, too. It's been a good discussion. For those in the audience, I thank you again for watching. It's clear that Burlington's at a critical juncture and needs leadership that both understands the complex issues that our community faces as we emerge from COVID, while we also plan responsibly for our future. I'm proud of all the accomplishments as the representative of my precinct, my leadership on town issues, as well as my passion and commitment in service to Burlington. I'll bring a different and important perspective to the Board of Selectmen. I've been actively involved in our town government for 25 years. Now's the time to elect someone who has a proven track record of advocating for accountability, transparency, and accessibility. I have the knowledge and experience to make an immediate and significant contribution to the board on day one. Please make sure you vote. Your voice matters. And when you do, I respectfully ask that you vote for me, Sheri Ellis, as your next member of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Now, Mike, your closing comments?
Thank you, Bill. In closing, I would like to say that I'm quite proud of my accomplishments, such as the paramedic program at the Burlington Fire Department, the MWR-A connection that will be completed in the next year or two. The creation of, creating the position of Economic Development Director has been, has been just an incredible assist to us in this era of COVID. The completion of Fire Station 2 and the soon-to-be-completed DPW Recreation Facility. I take very, very serious the duties and responsibilities of selectmen and take great pride in creating new policies and programs that enhance the quality of life of our residents. There was a lot to like about Burlington, and that is because of the vision, dedication, teamwork, approach of this administration and the Board of Selectmen. We have great challenges ahead as we attempt to recover from the devastating economic effects of the pandemic, but I'm confident that we will prevail, and I predict we will likely adopt some aspects of the operational changes that we have implemented during the past 12 months. I have a great respect for the voters in Burlington. I know that they pay close attention all year round and not just in April because I hear from them all year round. I return all of their phone calls and emails or have polite conversations at the grocery store or coffee shops with them. They know me and they trust me, and I'm confident that they will cast their vote based on performance and ideologies important to them on April 10th. If you would like to know more about my campaign, I can be found on Facebook and Twitter, or you may email me at mike@michaelrunyon.com. Thank you so much to BCAT for the opportunity to share my views tonight, and thank you also to those at home who have tuned in to listen.
Thank you, Mike. Our last speaker will be Joe, so go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you, BCAT, for hosting this. Thank you, Bill, for running a somewhat good show. Couple mistakes, but that's okay. We love you, Bill. Couple mistakes, but that's okay. We love you, Bill. The board's accomplishments have been incredible. The new fire station, the DPW building, Mike went through a whole list of them. Uh, we've sat on the board together for six years, so you'll hear the same thing from me that you did from Mike about our accomplishments. Uh, I could not be prouder of being the chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the last two years. It's been uh quite a um learning experience for me to run these Zoom meetings. Um, I believe that this board is a well-oiled machine, and this is not the time to change the board. This is a board that's run very well together. We all respect each other. It's a very, very well-run board. Uh, on that note, I would please ask you for one of your two votes on April tenth. Thank you very much. Thank you, BCAT.
Thank you, Joe. And that concludes our debate for today. I'd like to thank the three candidates for for all their efforts and their their words of wisdom tonight, and our three members of the press who uh came up with some very interesting and challenging questions. So thank you very much.